The items.
Here, doesn't matter where. Good evening, everybody. For the record, my name is Rob Watson. That's W A T S O N. I serve as the Executive Director for School Administrators in Montana. We have over a thousand school leaders across the state. So superintendents, principals, assistant principals, elementary high schools, special ed directors. So as you can imagine, it's a big state with lots of great educators across our state. I'm here this evening to report, however, that you have one of the very best educational leaders in the entire state. In fact, it's official, Mr. Jason Slater is the, excuse me, the high school principal of the year. And just a few comments. So it's my honor to share that Mr. Slater has been named as Montana Principal of the Year by the Montana Association of Secondary School Principals. This award is given each year to one outstanding secondary school principal in our state, someone who leads with vision, compassion, and a deep commitment to their students, staff, and community. Those who know Mr. Slater know that his leadership runs deeper than just academics. He has built a culture at Whitehall High School where people come first. Students feel safe and supported, where staff are encouraged to grow. His background in service shows up in the structure and the high expectations that he sets. But it is balanced with a genuine care for others. Whether he's mentoring a new teacher, checking in with students in the hallway, or showing up at a late night school event, Jason leads by example every single day. What truly sets him apart is his vision for the future of learning. He's not afraid to be innovative, integrating new tools like AI and promoting digital responsibility and keeping ethics at the heart of decision-making. He builds strong partnerships with families and the community, and he always keeps students at the center of his work. Tonight, I celebrate Principal Slater not only for this well-deserved recognition, but for the difference he makes in the lives of everyone at Whitehall High School. Jason will go on to represent Montana in the national competition for Principal of the Year. We look forward to celebrating Jason in a more formal way in front of his colleagues at the January Principals Conference. Congratulations, Jason, on behalf of the entire SAM organization. We're very proud of you.
You want to get a photo?
Oh.
Yeah. That's not from an angle.
Well, I do have to say something, but good word. I always got to say something.
I know you do.
I'm old enough, mature enough, things to say if I've got anywhere sound about the help of others. And the leadership of Mrs. Neeskins, her following, her has been great, the colleague of Mr. Conant, my father-in-law. You know, the list is lengthy. There's nothing that I've done on my own. And I definitely give thanks to God, and everybody's been helpful in my life. Yeah, congratulations. Thank you.
There he is, being helpful.
Yeah.
Very surprised.
Insurance.
Yeah, that was the cover story.
And I do think it's worth noting that we should really visit with Jason Silbani about the application because he put a lot of work into the words that he wrote on the application. So.
Thank you.
I did invite Jason to be here tonight, but he said no, he'd visit with you at a different time. So I gave him the opportunity to share and got shy of it. So anyhow.
Congrats.
Congratulations.
Good job. Are there any other comments?
You know, I would say this seriously, the school board, thank you for supporting that guy. He needs it. You know, it's between the school board and the superintendent, the support, and he talks to me a lot. He does appreciate it. Thank you so much for doing that.
Thanks, Larry.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, moving on. Yeah, hold on, hold on.
No, whatever. The great news coming our way from this morning.
All right. So we need approval of the minutes from last month's meeting. Motion.
I'm motion to approve the minutes from last meeting. I'll second.
Seconded. On paper?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, on to reports. Mr. Conant.
All right, everybody. Enrollment is at 187. So we stand strong there from where we've been at the beginning of the year. Looking back, we had Red Ribbon Week last week. The basic theme that we adopted in the elementary was making healthy choices, which is a pretty simple one to pick on Red Ribbon Week when the whole objective is to teach kids, to help the kids, to encourage kids to make healthy choices in everything that they do. So it was discussed in announcements, in classrooms, and very heavily hit upon in Mrs. Oliverson's CSSP class. We had a great, successful week. It was fun seeing the kids dress up and all in the name of living a healthy lifestyle. So good for them. Halloween, of course, happened last week. Always an exciting event in the elementary. Great parade. We had almost the entire bleachers and the team were filled with parents who came on site to see the spectacle. And kids did a great job on that. In fact, the only faux pas was when Mr. Conant, you'd think you'd figure it out after, what is this, my ninth Halloween, which way to go when the parade was over. And I sent that to parents in the wrong direction. So I apologize, parents. We'll do better next year. Current projects, Stephanie Lester is again back on site this week, modeling science of reading in the classrooms. This is her second round of doing this. So she goes into the classroom, teaches a class. Both teachers are in that classroom to observe this. And the other class, of course, is covered by staff, which is great. So the teachers get to see a professional coach putting these strategies into action. And that really helps for high-quality professional development. Formative evaluations are underway. You'll recall that all non-tenured staff gets a formative evaluation before November 15th, at least one. And I am at the halfway mark. I will be finished by next Wednesday. I, a group of teachers, and I attended the second of several science of reading trainings yesterday. Our focus is continuing on the proficiency-based model for mathematics. And a lot of good work was done yesterday, creating the rubric for how things are assessed and also creating the description of every individual standard at that grade level so that teachers can model their instruction based on the requirements set forth by the Office of Public Instruction and the State of Montana and our standards. Parent-teacher conferences this Friday. It's going to be a big event. We have PTSA is going to be here, thankfully, to give out some treats. Teachers have been contacting parents this entire time, trying to get everybody ready to go for and set up a time so they can come in and meet with the parents and the teachers, show the magic of the classroom. And just as a side note, there will be questions, I'm sure, about the new report card and the standards-based grading that is occurring. And I will have a booth set up to explain that, if there's any questions on that. Additionally, I will be there to help any parents interested in getting logged into the MAST portal so that they can receive their students' results in real time. So I'll be there and available for that. While that is happening, our paraprofessional staff, which we have an outstanding paraprofessional staff, they are eager lifelong learners. They want to be experts in what they are doing. And they really do make an incredible difference in interventions with our students who need a little extra help, as well as enrichments. So we're going to have a science of reading training occur for them on Friday. So of course, the objective is to get everybody trained, up the entire instructional staff, pairs, and certified teachers, so that they are instructing at an exceptional level to help our kids get the information that they need. Looking ahead, Veterans Day program is Tuesday, the 11th. That's something that the elementary students all look forward to because they all have singing part. And Mrs. Hilek does a fantastic job getting it set up, recognizing service members in our community. And so we're excited about that. It's a grand event. The public is invited and welcomed. And we hope to have the kind of excellent turnout that we have had over the past many years. Picture retakes are next Wednesday. So important note to all parents, make sure that if you need those retakes, that they are ready to go on Wednesday, the 12th. Further on down the line, we did select a concert date for the elementary each winter concert. It's going to be December 3rd at 6:30. Some information is coming home from Mrs. Ronsberg so that you have all the information that you need. I will bring this up on our December 2nd meeting and over-communicate it on Facebook, CSUN, Infinite Campus. We're doing things a little bit different this year. We are not going to be sending the kids down the hallway at the conclusion of the concert. Instead, they'll be released to their parents. And I think there is plans for a special visitor to come and join us at the front of the gym on that day. So I think we can streamline that process a little bit more, and I'll talk more about that. So look for those communications. Onto MAST discussion. So if I could draw your attention to the screen up there. Got a little presentation here. So the MAST Montana aligned to standards through year assessment, given to all third through eighth grade students three times per year. It tests in math and English, language arts. And what we are going to see here are the results from last year's test. So they give this test throughout the year, testing on specific standards. At the end of the year, they compile all of this data and Whitehall is compared to the rest of the state, as well as being compared to the standards that the students, over which the students were tested. And we can have a look at how our students are doing compared to themselves and the rest of the state. Here's our third grade English Language Arts. As you can see on there, we, over on the far right-hand side, Montana average is an average scaled score of 308. Whitehall was at 320. We just edged out the state standard. And with a total of 50% of our students were either proficient or advanced in language arts in the third grade, which is not bad numbers. There's room for some improvement. We want to be, oh, there's an point to it. We want to shrink this yellow number and grow these green and blue ones. And when we move it over to math, you can see the proficiency, our advanced numbers are pretty good. 38% of the kids in that blue band, four of them are in the green band, which means they're proficient. They have on-grade level. They understand the standard and can perform the required components of that standard. Again, we want to continue to shrink the yellow and grow those two. But again, just edging out the average scale score. But we, right here, we're looking at, what is that, 53%? 52, yeah, 53%. We want to set our bars a little bit higher at the school. And as you can see, in fourth grade, they've done just that. Again, this is last year's fourth grade class. 65% of the students are either proficient or advanced in that standard, broadening the gap between the state and Whitehall goal. So realistically, when you've got 65% proficient or advanced in a grade level, that's outstanding. We, of course, want to continue to push and push, shrink these two numbers down a little bit as much as we can. But right here, we're getting some work done. This is what happens when we devote time and resources to these professional developments, these high-quality professional developments. We make sure that the interventions that we're using are evidence-based, our curriculum is evidence-based. This is, these are the kinds of results we're hoping to see. Switching over to math, again, we're 54% are either proficient or advanced. Continuing to broaden that gap between Montana's average and Whitehall's average. So some really thorough work there to continue to grow. We swing over to fifth grade. Fifth grade really blew it out of the water. And I cannot credit Mrs. Farren and Mrs. Slater enough. They have done tremendous work in their classrooms. Here, we're looking at 72% of our students are proficient or advanced. That's outstanding. That's outstanding. And beating the state average, they're getting the work done. But then we flip it over to Mrs. Slater's fifth grade math. This is exceptional. This is exceptional. We're looking at 88% of our students are proficient or advanced, with almost 80% of them advanced. This blows it out of the wall. I'm so proud and so thankful to have Mrs. Slater on our staff. She's revolutionized this, and we need to replicate this. We want this to happen. What does this call mean? All grade levels didn't see the state average score. Fifth grade proficiency rates in math and ELA are exceptional. Every year, our students appear to grow. If you look at those handouts, you can see that growth happening throughout. It's a step-by-step process. We want to build from the bottom up and the top down. What is happening in that fifth grade class, we want to replicate, try to practice this out when party starts these conversations. Because when we have teachers who reach that level of excellence, fortunately, with the team that we have assembled in Whitehall Elementary in particular, they are lifelong learners. They want to get better. They are on board to learn from each other. That is what the definition of a professional learning community is. And we've got some leaders that are going to be able to take charge and build that collective efficacy where it's not one class or one teacher or one grade level doing great in isolation. It is everybody growing and learning from each other. That's the kind of team that I want to be a part of, and I am super proud that we have them here at Whitehall Elementary. So thank you, Mrs. Slater, Mrs. Farren, rest of the team. This looks awesome on paper, but we've got more work to do, and we're going to get it done.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
And really, too, I think it isn't just the teachers. It's the whole team. Your work, Mrs. Oliverson's work, the work of the pairs supporting the teachers that do the interventions. I really do think the whole idea of collective efficacy is so important that, really, it takes the team to succeed at a level that high. And I do think the fifth grade scores are entirely remarkable. I started my career as a fifth grade teacher. I was a principal in an intermediate elementary school for a number of years. I've never seen scores this high on the state test ever for English or math for any school. I'd be really surprised if we weren't in the top five or top school potentially in the state on those scores. That is 88% proficient and advanced in math. And with 79% advanced is like really difficult to do when you think of the cross-section of kids, right? That are in a classroom. Not every kid is excited about math. Not every kid is excited to read. And so to get those scores is not, is great instruction from both Mrs. Farren and Mrs. Slater. But it's also a commitment from the kids to show that they know what they're doing and they want to showcase the hard work that they've done. I know some of this is them being motivated to show that they can do well on the test. And that's a big part of this, too, that we want to replicate in other grades, is that pride itself. So. So definitely amazing work. Thanks for coming tonight, and you definitely deserve another round of applause.
Well done. All right, no pressure, but on to Mr. Slater.
Yeah. I feel bad. I mean, I couldn't even say my wife's name as far as people that support me because I choked up, but couldn't do anything without her. She is by far the smartest in the household. So moving on to the 612, there's so much to celebrate. It's hard, I know we like to keep these things short, and we have so much going on. I'd encourage any board member to walk the halls. This year, our staff put up for Red Ribbon Week. They just delivered so huge in all of the studio. I couldn't even come down and just list all the stuff. The students working the hallways, the teachers tying stuff, two responsible choices. We do have a substance abuse issue in Whitehall, Montana. Anybody that denies that, their head's in the sand. And reaching out to people and saying, "Wake up, what can we do? What can we do to choose to be drug-free?" We had, and we brought in Choices 406 in assembly, and I talked to some of my kids. They said that was the most impactful assembly on drug and alcohol and positive choices that they've had their entire system. My upperclassman said this. And one of the most resounding comments was this guy saying, "You will be at a party and there will be drugs, and you need to be strong enough to say, 'No, you know, I'm not going to do that because there's 10 other people that are going to fall one way or the other. And if you're strong enough to be that leader to say, 'I'm not going to do this,' then 10 other kids are going to go with you." I didn't, and that's why I spent, that's why I'm where I'm at. And it was, it was very good. So that was good, Red Ribbon Week. FFA is our largest student organization, and if you haven't been watching Facebook, they are building a statewide reputation for their accolades. They went to the Nationals and scored incredibly well, the best in our school history. I have a picture here of our poetry team, four students, and they had their individual placements in there. Zane, who's a senior, gold division, ranking 22nd. Hannah Fraser, 72nd. Addie Gray, 76th. Hallie Downey, 94th. As a team, they achieved silver, and they're just beside, and in addition to that, anytime you get to attend something at a national level, and I talked to those kids that are in our school that have been back, and they're just beaming, and they had a great experience. So definitely hats off to them, to FFA, to all the work those kids put in, along with Ms. Miller, the parents, the teachers, the coaches, the whole, the whole outfit. Nothing but good things for our school, so we want to recognize them. Attendance, I always report on, our attendance is even. Both schools are 93.5%. That's good, it's, it's all right. I mean, we got to show up, that's one of the things we really push all the time, you got to show up. Learning and behavior, first quarter just ended. We now, we went, third year going paperless, so parents can log on to see their students' report cards. That savings, and that idea came from Mr. Silvani, saved us about $1,000 a year instead of just mailing all those things out. That's a good move, becoming more efficient. I talk about Red Ribbon Week, I mean, I've been on a bit of a soapbox on that. The more I see about it, I talk about attendance, behavior, grades, and the fourth factor for opening or closing doors for kids is substance abuse. It really is. I mean, I believe that to the core. And the amount of kids and that share with me the environment that they're in is challenging. So October's good, MAST and science assessment update. I have both MAST and science, so as Mr. Conig mentioned, MAST is the new, last year was the first time for it to be the new ruled-out statewide assessment. We piloted it before. Last year, I told my staff, I said, "We're doing so much testing, focus on the NWEA MAP test for student growth." Our results in the middle school are not as high as we would like them to be. We're a touch under average on that. And we've already went to work and looking at working immediate discussions. And one of the things we're always building, I heard both Hannah and Curtis say, is collective efficacy. As soon as we got them, we're already problem-solving. And one acronym I love, I love following different people, and there's a famous Notre Dame coach that coined the acronym WIN, what is important now, right? So yes, we have a goal in the middle school and high school that we will achieve at or above state average in all standardized assessments. We did not meet that goal last year. We did not meet that goal. We will next year. All right, so we're already looking at it. I'm eager to see the amount of growth that's going to occur in the 612. So with that, being discussions with teachers, one thing we're working on this year, a lot of student advocacy, student voice, student buying, right, to get them to care. So asking the kids, hey, what's it going to take? Why are you not applying yourself in this? So it's not going to be one thing, it's going to be a lot of things to raise those up. Now, we do, in addition to reading or English, Arts and Math, science is our other standardized test that we have. And our science has been consistently above state average and performing so great. So that's, that's a shining light for the middle school for sure. Our science instruction in place of a lot of the state's struggles is very good, right? So we want to get the rest of our classes there and doing that. I have a table down here, not quite the same as his, but it's just a table, English, math. You see Montana's rate for the grades three through eight, Whitehall Middle School rates three through eight. Where are the averages, and what do these things mean? The rollout for MAST was terrible for the state of Montana. Now, right now, what we're doing is trying to get more information about the test. We obviously have some local experts, the two teachers that were here, they got it figured out, right? In addition to them, so we want to tap all of our resources and see, hey, as we learn this new instrument, okay? The test's been out one year, there's no longitudinal study data. How do they go from one year to the next we have last year? Now, one thing that is unique about this assessment is a through-year assessment. But my staff and I, everybody, in full honesty, is still learning a lot about this test, and what do we do to prepare our kids for that? So those are a bit of the caveat. I definitely, nothing but praise, respect, and appreciation for the incredible work that's been done in the elementary school. The middle school, we fell just a touch shorter where we want to be, and I'm excited about the growth we'll have going into next year. So upcoming stuff, parent-teacher conference is Friday, Vet's Day Assembly, Ms. Hilek, that's just such a great local tradition. And I'm not saying that just because I'm a vet, probably the best, the Montana Vet Homes in Columbia Falls where I grew up, and I still remember those assemblies. Until I came to Whitehall, I didn't see anything that was even close in comparison. It's a great thing, so I'm so glad the work they do with that. Blood drive coming up, picture day retakes. I almost wish they'd take them one time so the kids would stop screwing off the first time. High school dance, November 15th, winter athletics. Athletics for us, fall season recently ended. The great thing on that is they get a couple weeks break before they start practice on the 20th. I already brought a couple kids in to talk about their grades ahead of time because I know they're planning on playing, and instead of starting with 30%, you just will get it to a 70% now. Thanksgiving, my favorite holiday, 27. And that's it. I'd encourage you, I can't fit it all in in a quick report, so we do put out a newsletter. I sick last weekend. No, I have not got my boil, so I did not get a newsletter out last week.
Stop passing on the 350s. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Slater.
All right, a few things here that have to do with the city. First of all, thank you to Cory, our Cory Flapton and crew for installing those speed radar signs. I apparently did not go fast enough to trigger the, the blue and red flash light, but I am told that if you see...
Yeah, they do.
So painful.
I was going to say, they do.
If you can see five miles an hour above the speed limit, they do do that. So, because I did text him and say, "I don't think these are working right because if you go like slightly above, they're not doing anything." And he's like, "Well, I have to be five miles an hour."
That's true.
Well, I saw it, I saw it, it was right by.
Okay, but thank you for getting those installed. For those of you that have been on the board a long time, 11 years ago in this district, we started to try to get these signs. It's a little bit crazy to me that it's taken this long. There was even like a time when Paul, Shaw, and I went to the state theater team. We were advocating for the sign, like our digital sign, but also to put these linking signs. And because Whitehall's really is a state highway, this has been an incredibly arduous process. I believe there's been change at the, at the state of who is, makes the decisions on how signs are installed, and that's how we've gotten the signs, because these are group signs. So anyways, it is a, it is a great safety feature for our kids. I think it does draw people's attention to their speed, and I'm sure people are going slow enough, or at least not more than five miles an hour above the speed limit as they pass through our school zone. So it's good. In addition, in regards to the city, I did attend the last TIF board meeting, and Curtis sits on TIF as the school representative. TIF is the Tax Increment Finance Fund. It funds blight improvement in our community. They do have a really significant amount of money that they dole out every year, like somewhere in the neighborhood of $300,000, is that accurate, Curtis?
That is accurate.
Yeah, and so the blight that I would like to draw at the school, and I do think that this is legitimate, if you walk around and look at just the outside of our buildings, our buildings, the last time we, they've been repainted that we're aware of was like 36 years ago. That long exceeds the durability and life of any paint on the market. So you can assume that our, the moisture barrier, the permeability of the paint has degraded. But beyond that, when you look at the purples that are everywhere, there's a lot of different purples. There's a lot of faded purple, grape purple, flodgy purple, a lot of different purples, just different eras of purple. Beyond that, too, as you know, we've dealt with the woodpecker problem on the stucco and like the recurring holes in our, in our facade. And we really need to do something different entirely on that entire, the east and west facades of our, of our middle school buildings because those, those woodpeckers just... Anyhow.
It's too small.
Name really, too.
So we do believe that it'll cost about $106,000 to paint all of our building C outside. This is kind of just a, a rough estimate. And I have asked TIF to share that with us half, so that, the request to TIF was up to $80,000, not to exceed $80,000 on that request, that we would ask to help pay for the paint, to repaint the entire campus, so the exterior. So I will, they're in between funding cycles right now, they need a new appropriation this coming month, so I was asked to return so that they can address it with a new appropriation. So I will be back at the December meeting, is that right?
Correct.
And I will keep you posted on the status of that. And then, this is, this is a, this is a gift you may not appreciate, but I'm about to pass out some work policies that we need to have you guys look at in the coming months. So legislative session this year was extraordinarily busy, creating new, new language that then results in policies. We also, over the years, had a real hybrid of both MTSSBA, Montana School Board Association policy, and once upon a time, this was like more than a decade ago, we had, we had a law maintaining our policy. So as a result, we had kind of like a strange mishmash of language, and then we had policy numbers that didn't match current MTSSBA policies. We did contract with MTSSBA, this was back in June, to go through all of our policies, provide updates. You'll see that the majority of our policies are actually fine, like as written, we've adopted them. They made recommendations on ones we should adopt. And so the only things in your package are the ones where they have either done language updates to the policy, so it is a policy that exists, but now it's been updated and keeping with new law, or it is brand-new to us. It doesn't mean we have to adopt it as we, these are all your choice. So here's what I propose, because this is a lot. I would like to work to approve these at the February board meeting. So we have a December board meeting, we don't have a January board meeting, we have a February board meeting. So I think by February, that gives everyone a reasonable amount of time to actually lay eyes on these and read the ones that are particularly of interest. However, Chad and Robin, you are both luckily, so lucky for you, you are on the policy committee of the board.
I volunteered Robin for that. I don't think I would.
Both of you are truly on that. And in the interim, between now and February, I do need to request that the three of us meet, and we actually make a rec, a formal recommendation to board of adoption of all or some of these, and whether we need to change language in any of them, that kind of stuff. So there, there does need to be a formal meeting between the three of us. We can wait until January to do that, or, so that way you have enough time, a few months, to actually go over these and make notes. So just so you know, the way this is organized, this is a crosswalk document, it's at the start of each series. So there's a 1,000 crosswalk document, it says, yes, you do already have that policy, and then that means I didn't include it for you. But then if it says no, it's missed, like we're recommending it, then I have a copy of that policy in the pages that follow that would show you what the proposed changes is. So there was quite a few proposed changes for 1,000, particularly for 2,000. That one was actually quite sick, a lot of changes there. 3,000, 4,000, 5,000, 6,000, 7,000, 8,000. They only have like maybe four or five policies recommended for approval. So it was really the 1,000 and 2,000 series, with particularly the 2,000 series that had the most kind of recommendations as far as things that were changed and keeping of law. The legal references are all in there, so if it was a legal change, you can see the Montana code annotated that applies, the last two legislative sessions have been really active. So, yeah. And Curtis and Jason, I did make a copy of this for you guys as well.
I tried to.
I'm not asking you to be at the policy meeting, but, yes, I stood by the copier and made these copies today, so you are taking those. So unless you have any questions, that is what I copy for you tonight. Sorry, it's a lot of homework, but I think it'll put our policies really up to date. The other thing about the policy management moving forward is it will all be online. And so we can adopt policies in real time and actually just click the button on the website saying we adopted or we updated it, and it will update automatically because it will be managed by a platform called Symbly, which is MTSSBA's platform. So essentially, the, the days of re-typing the policies and having these big, this will hopefully be the very last time, you have a very big, thick, packed of paper. It will all be digital from this mic board. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to new business, 21st Century Program update.
So I, we had a misunderstanding. I thought they were coming to this meeting, they're coming to December, so they'll be here next month.
All right, I just occurred to them. Fund 112 review.
Okay, so we are bringing Fund 112 to your attention because that is our, that is our food service fund. And last year, we had a shortfall of $16,000 in that fund. And I've committed to you guys that if we have shortfalls in funds, that I will, you know, of course, bring into attention. We've talked a lot about athletics, the S account funds. We will give an update on fall sports at our December meeting so that we have a real-time kind of update of where we are, we're leaving the fall season. But the other fund where we have had the shortfall, and this, this was the first year we've had a shortfall in Whitehall, was our 112 fund, that is our lunch fund. And I think it happened for a number of reasons. First, I think if you revisit the past of our lunch fund, this is not uncommon. I do remember when Mr. Sullivan was the superintendent, the board transferring roughly $20,000 one year to cover a shortfall. This was, you know, more than seven years ago, so before, before I became superintendent. So this is not the first time that this has existed. Then there was a real windfall period during COVID, where a lot of USDA money was pumped into schools, kids were all receiving free lunches, and the subsidies really increased. What has happened in the most recent year is that the subsidies have decreased and food costs have increased, as you know. So our, our food bill is extraordinarily high in comparison to our revenue. So just to kind of give you an idea of where we are this year, we have spent $30,479 so far in food. Now, there is a lot of upfront food orders that are frozen, and we use them throughout the year, spices and so on, dry goods. So that will not be replicated every two months, but it is still, you know, a, a high amount. Our revenue total is six, is thirty-six thousand. So you're thinking, okay, we're pretty good. But then you throw in our payroll expenses of nearly fourteen thousand and we're now back to being upside down. So I do think it is a situation where there's not a lot of fat to trim. Jenna and I are now meeting every two months. We are, Jenna's, Jen Crevo is our kitchen manager. She's doing a great job. We're meeting every two months. We're talking about, you know, how can we be strategic about ordering and sourcing and staffing and all the things? So we are doing our best to ensure that we are, you know, trying to save as much as possible. However, there is every likelihood that we will be upside down more than sixteen thousand dollars this year at the rate that we're going. And I will certainly kind of keep you posted on that because where that money comes from, then to cover that is out of the general fund. I mean, that is, that is why these, that is why these shortfalls in funds, such as S account, fall sports, and one twelve matter because it means that, you know, I'm, I'm pulling from our general operating fund to subsidize them. So I'll keep you posted. No recommendation for action right now at this time, just more of an FYI kind of where we're at and what we're doing to try to mitigate it as much as we can.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. On to the proposal to adopt Bridge Health Alliance Insurance Plan.
Great. This is actually really exciting. Hopefully get a chance to read through some of the materials ahead of time. So in twenty twenty-three, the legislature devoted forty million dollars to a startup fund to fund a health insurance trust that was for educators. For whatever reason, when the state health insurance trust that covers every other state employee was formed, they deliberately excluded educators at that time. I have no idea why. I don't, I don't know. I've been asked that before. I, I'm sure it was some political thing at the time, or they couldn't figure out the, the actuarial information or whatever. So this is kind of an effort to remedy that, to actually have it truly be a state-funded system. And this would be a nonprofit trust, which I think is really important because currently we are all dealing with for-profit insurance companies who are, then, you know, have a different motivation on how they, how they structure their coverage, how they structure claims and pay off all the things. They may, they usually have claims processors that are, you know, it's a separate company. There's rebates that are being given from prescription companies back to insurance companies. It's all kind of, there's, there's a lot of complexity to it. What this does essentially is it creates a large, single large pool of all educators and it reduces the per member administrative costs, the stop-loss costs. It's self-funded. It eliminates the revenue sure profit margins and all the savings returned back to the nonprofit plan. So essentially, if there's savings, that results in rate reductions for everyone. So we've already received our premium proposal and it would be six point two percent less than currently this year. As you know, generally every year we receive a three to ten percent increase. So when you think about that, we've really reduced for next year nine to thirteen percent from what we were going to pay. This is really awesome news for our staff because we and our CDA already commit to paying X amount of dollars for their premium. So the savings is actually being returned to our staff's pockets in the form of, you know, increased compensation because they have less deductive for their portion of the, of the, the coverage. So I think it's good. The union is on board. The union has seen all of these documents. Ronnie Head, our union new president, said, we're happy to support this. It's kind of a no-brainer. And so I would recommend that we move to do this. I do, if you, if you want to proceed with this, I did get more language because there's kind of a multi-pronged, I guess, motion that has to be made.
I motion that the board is to support obtaining employee health insurance from Bridge Health Alliance and approve signing the participation agreement with Bridge Health Alliance and multi-district agreement for the formation of the Bridge Health Alliance Trust.
I'll second it.
Seconded. On favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
This would take effect next year.
It would, yeah. So must is sunsetting this year and then this would be in July of twenty-six. Or do we, we twenty-six, sorry. Yeah.
All right. On to hiring the boys' middle school basketball head coach.
Yes, so we are pleased to recommend Jaden Stanley Williams. He will be the head coach alongside Justin Clements, who's returning as middle school boys' coach. We're hoping that you hire him because he, I gave him unofficial approval to start yesterday because the timing wasn't great. He is an experienced basketball player himself. He played four years of college basketball and then actually did professional basketball in Australia for a while. So he's extremely experienced with basketball. Alyssa and I had a pleasure of watching practice today. It was the most fun I've had in a long time. They were in the weight room and he had a whistle. I'm like, what is going on? This is like five-thirty at night. I'm hearing like a whistle. I'm like, who's whistle? So we peeked through the doors and he's got a whistle and he's got the kids like doing lunges to his whistle. I'm like, these middle school boys have never worked this hard ever. I am so impressed. So I, I am already impressed and it is day two of practice and I highly recommend Jaden Stanley Williams.
All right, we are motion.
I motion to hire Jaden Stanley Williams as the middle school basketball coach.
I'll second it.
Seconded. Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion passes. Okay, we need a motion to approve the elementary claims and accounts.
I motion to approve the elementary claims and accounts. I'll second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
You guys agree?
Yeah.
Okay. I had a bit of math in my head there. Anyway, okay, now we need a motion to, was that high school or elementary? Okay. Motion to approve the high school claims and accounts.
I shall move.
I second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We've been heated down for so many years voting on elementary, we don't dare.
I know, we finally got it together.
I couldn't remember, I looked at Chad.
Gina shamed me for so long, I guess.
I'm so much nicer than Gina.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Love it. Yeah. Some kind of process.
I know.